Good morning, welcome to the February 16th regular meeting of the Mason County Board of Commissioners, Harry Cashman, Sergeant Disable Karen, Veterans Association. Would you please give the conference adjutant's briefs?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. District 1, Amy Netherton.
I'm here.
Mr. District 2, Tim Sheldon.
I'm here, sir. I have to call in today about the legislation session at 9:00 as well, sorry.
Mr. District 3, Terry Jeffrey.
Here. Next is role as Correspondents and Organizational Businesses. Are there any correspondents who report?
There is. The Veterans Service Office sent their monthly report. Alan Frye applied for the planning advisory board for District 2. The U.S. Department of Commerce sent notification of the 2016 government unit survey. The USDA sent information regarding the Olympia Peninsula Resource Advisory Committee. And Deanne and Stephen Beach sent a letter of concern regarding the Figurine Road fee limit.
Thank you. Looks like there's no press releases, so we will move on to item number five, and this is the open forum for citizen input. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on any items not on the agenda. If you'd like to address the commission, can you please raise your hand? This is an item not on the agenda?
It's on the agenda. I just want to say that we're here enforced to answer any questions that you may have.
I appreciate that, and I see that. Thank you very much. And that is Jeff Thompson, Chair of our Veterans Advisory Board. Thank you. Any other citizens have items they'd like to address the commission on? Please show up, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sheriff Williams, 309 West G Street. AARP Foundation's Tax Aid offers free individual tax preparation for low to moderate income taxpayers in Shelton. Tuesdays from 1:00 to 4:00 at the Belfair Library, Saturdays from 10:00 to 3:00 downstairs at the Shelton Library, and Wednesdays from 10:00 to 3:00 at the Singer Center, by appointment only during tax season through April 15. Don't forget to bring last year's tax return, social security cards for yourself and all dependents, photo ID for all taxpayers, and a checkbook for direct deposit of your refund. Starting this year, along with all relevant tax information, you also need your 1090 forms A, B, or C, depending on how you're covered for health insurance. If you have questions, please come to one of the locations, and please tell anyone that may need help about this program. Thank you and happy taxes.
Does anybody else have an item they'd like to address the commission on that's not on the agenda? Hearing that, we'll move on to item number six, the adoption of the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of the agenda as written.
Is there a second, Commissioner Sheldon?
I'm sorry, I will second the motion.
Motion second to approve the adoption of the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carried. I approve of the minutes. There are no minutes. I think this is the item number eight. This is the approval of the action agenda. We have 12 items on our action agenda. The intention is to approve them all with one vote, barring any request to remove any items from the agenda for a separate vote. We will read through these items, and then, once they're read through, you can raise your hand if you have any questions, and we'll address any questions you may have. And you'll also have the commission give an opportunity to answer any questions. Then I'll ask if anybody would like any items pulled off the consent agenda for testimony in a separate vote. So first, we'll start by reading them through. Commissioner Sheldon, would you please read items 8.1 through 8.4? Commissioner Netherton, 8.5 through 8.9? And I will finish the list.
All right, Madam President, here.
Yes.
8.1, continued from February 2nd, 2016, regular commission meeting, approval to adopt an ordinance to amend county code chapter 2.88 to allow alternate location for regular commission meetings and allow joint meetings between county legislative authorities. 8.2, approval of the resolution supporting documentation authorizing the refinancing of the contract for the Mason County Public Works Facility, 100 West Public Works Drive in Belton, with the state of Washington local, that is, the local property capital asset lending. The maximum amount to finance is $10,675,000 and $750,000 of proceeds set aside in Resolution 91, National 9, as principal pay down. 8.3, approval of the resolution, amending the Veterans Advisory Board operating policy as recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board, the VAB. The amendments include minor changes to the operating policy, adding two members from the Disabled American Veterans to the VAB for a total of 10 members, and raising the annual limit from $800 to $1,000 per qualified veteran. And the last item for me to read is 8.4, approval to appoint Melissa McFadden as group director of Mason County Public Works, effective close of business day on Friday, February 26, 2016, and delay permanent for regular recruitment has been higher than the others.
Madam Chair, item 8.5, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, March 15, 2016, to consider the sale of real property located at 240 East Evergreen Road, parcel number 12206-51-00015, and 250 East Evergreen Road, parcel number 12206-51-00016 in Belfair. Item number 8.6, approval to cancel the March 7, 2016, commissioner briefings in the March 8, 2016, regular commission meeting due to scheduling conflicts. Item number 8.7, approval to add the Pioneer Cemetery in Union, Washington, to the Mason County Historical Register. Item number 8.8, approval to sign the letter of support for Sweetwater Creek Water Wheel Park project as requested by the Hood Canal Salmon Enhancement Group. Item number 8.9, approval warrants claims clearing fund warrant number 8036569 through 8036769 for a grand total of $536,543.40. Direct deposit fund warrants number 28953 through 29331 for $586,639.47. Salary clearings fund warrants number 7001663 through 7001703 for a total of $902,581.30 for a grand total of $2,257,633.90. Claims clearing fund total for the year, $2,193,129.37. Direct deposit year-to-date total, $1,816,705.40, and the salary clearing year-to-date
Item 8.10, approval of the Veterans Assistance Fund applications for necessity items, $670, and housing, $1,880, for a total of $2,550, as recommended by the Veterans Service Office. 8.11, approval for the Board to authorize Public Works to solicit award and enter into contracts for the procurement of materials and installation services to complete the Public Works Facility outdoor lighting retrofit project. Announcement of awards will be scheduled for a regular commission meeting. 8.12, approval for the Board to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications, RFQ, to obtain a consultant to evaluate and provide an estimated cost to bring the current solid waste systems up to compliance and select an entry into an agreement. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on any of the items just read? Any Commissioners have any questions on any of the items just read?
Yes, Madam President, I do. I have a question about, and maybe it's for a separate vote, in fact, here later, but for 8.12 and 8.8.
Okay, what are your, we'll start with 8.8. What is your question there?
Okay, 8.8 is requesting a letter of support for Sweetwater Park Water Wheel Project. I don't know how much the project is going to cost. I don't know what the local match might be. I've heard that there's some issues with zoning, and the big issues of access from the state highway, and some other things. So, obviously, I wasn't, if we had a briefing about that issue, I didn't hear what those, if those questions had been raised.
Let's see, we don't have anybody here from, sorry, I was going to say from on the zoning issue. Do you mind coming to the podium and answering some of the Commissioners' questions? Commissioner, I'm going to request that 8.8 be pulled out for a separate vote. Should we just do that?
Yes, I agree.
At the time, I apologize.
Hold on for one second.
Okay. We'll go ahead and cover this after we cover the rest of the items.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
And then on 8.12, perhaps that's a second vote, or a separate vote as well. I have some questions that I have, and I'm sure Melissa can help me with those, so if you put that off as a second, separate vote as well.
Okay. Are there any other items that the Members of the public would like to pull for a separate vote?
Just Madam Chair, 8.1 and item 8.3, please.
Any questions, Commissioners Netherton?
We've got a few left, so.
Okay. Hearing no more questions or requests to take these whole items for a separate vote, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the action agenda as written, excluding 8.1, 8.3, 8.8, and 8.12, which shall be removed for a separate vote.
I'll second that.
It's a move the second to approve the action agenda as written, excluding items 8.1, 8.3, 8.8, and 8.12 on today's action agenda. Is there any discussion? I just want to take this opportunity publicly to bid our Public Works Director, Brian Matthews, farewell. Thank you for your service to the county, and thank you to Melissa McFadden for stepping up as an interim director. Thank you, Commissioner.
Again, the same, that's funny because when we first-
Madam Chair, could you just wait one second? I'm going to have to go off and vote. Hang on.
I can continue with this. When I first saw, came in Brian, and it's funny, we sat down and talked, and he, do you remember saying, "You marked your calendar" that day? Because he thought that his time was over and stuff. Well, no, well, we had some issues up north, but I'll tell you what, I got approached by some of the local people that worked for him, that spoke extremely highly of him, and I think it was a good move that you, that I didn't have issue with him, that we changed that and moved forward. My community has been very thankful for you for all you've done up in North Mason, and working with all of them and everything, and you will be missed, Brian, very much so. Thank you.
I wish you well, and you may remember.
Yeah.
And there is a going away party this Thursday, this Thursday, at the Public Works.
I'm going to try my best to be there, out of respect for you.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. I think I heard you, Commissioner Sheldon.
Yes, and thank you for waiting a second there.
I want to-
...the ones here today. But I also wanted to thank the Veterans Advisory Board for coming by and being so supportive of this item on the agenda.
I wanted to throw in one little comment before we vote. We're voting here on refinancing the Public Works for a grand savings of?
A little over $866,000.
Yeah. Well, let me tell you, if you were ever wondered about when we created our departments and how we've changed things, we've got a lot of giving to go now to make up before anybody could yell at us again with $850,000 worth savings. So, great job.
Thank you to our budget management for that opportunity, but I understand there might be some other opportunities coming up.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we will go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor of the action agenda excluding the items that were pulled out, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. That takes us to item 8.1, continued from February 2nd, 2016, regular commission meeting, approval to adopt an ordinance to amend county code chapter 2.88 to allow alternate location for regular commission meetings and allow joint meetings between county legislative authorities. We don't have staff here to speak to this issue, but I just will quickly say that there was some legislative, two bills in the legislature that formerly, formerly county commissioners were not allowed to conduct any business outside of the county seat. And after quite some time in the legislature, they passed two bills, one that allowed us to do that, and then, secondly, to allow us to meet with another county commissioner, Board of Commissioners, so that you could conduct business outside of the county seat. Normally, it would have had to be telephonically, where one Board of Commissioners would have to sit in their chambers, we would sit in our own chambers, and with this, what I like to call the world of regionalization, where we have so many regional responsibilities with other county commissions, this is very, very helpful to us to be able to actually have face-to-face meetings with them. We held it for some further discussion on a request from a constituent who's here that had requested that in the, in the state law that they, the bill that was passed, they allowed this change of venue to be done with a special meeting notice, and that has a less restrictive, a less, has a very short timeline as compared to most of our meeting notices, where they're 30 days. And so, there was a request that we consider changing the language in our resolution. We had some discussion and felt that the purposes of having these meetings generally are kind of on an emergency basis more than more often than not. We don't see ourselves doing these meetings on a regular basis, continue to use this, we'll use this opportunity to meet with the public on an issue that's specific to that community as much as possible, and then again, if we want to, need to travel to another commission. However, we are, have an opportunity for public comment here, and so that is why it's on the action without any changes. So I will now, oh, is there any comment from the Commission? Okay, so I will go ahead and open this for public testimony, and anybody that'd like to testify on item 8.1, please step your hand. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. Tom Davis, 170 West Bushy Road. So I, my concerns will remain constant from the last time this was on the agenda, and let me segregate these two out so we don't confuse them. Those, both those bills, House Bill 1013 and House Bill 1145, substitute House Bill 1145, were approved, actually, on the same date, were approved almost side by side, same date, same, same voting sequence for the House and the Senate on the same days, and approved by the Governor on the same day. But the stark difference between the two, and let me dispense with House Bill 1013, because that allows for, that allows for, for business, a regular session of the county commissioners to be held, regular business session, outside the county seat, which I think is a good thing, because it allows you to hold meetings every quarter up in Belfair, and normally, when you hold those meetings, you can't do county business, and it kind of makes people feel a little bit strange that they have to come all the way down here each time. So I don't, and you have to give 30 days' notice to do that, to have a regularly scheduled meeting of the county Board of County Commissioners out of the county seat. So, I think that's, that was a great idea. And the fact that you need 30 days to do that is a good idea, and the fact that the purpose of that particular piece of legislation was to support greater citizen engagement in local government, and that's stipulated, and that's a good idea. So, without further ado, that goes off the table. My concern is substitute House Bill 1145. It seems rather bizarre to me that you have to have a 30-day notice to do county business within the county but outside the county seat, but you only need 24 hours' notice to be given to the public to do county business in another county. Well, that's the special meeting requirement. I'm not sure that the legislature fully understood at that time, because there's no, there's no language here that we're talking about that's an emergency meeting. An emergency meeting bypasses pretty much everything, and we have to take care of business at that time, and you don't get any, you don't get any grief from, certainly from this citizen. But this was basically, the motivation for this came by from the Benton-Franklin community, the two counties, and they wanted to combine their businesses from time to time because they're close together and they're two small counties, and so on. And that's fine and dandy, I don't have any problem with that, but when the legislature gets involved, it pertains to all counties, so that there's unintended consequences. So what we have now is a situation where literally, and I'm not saying this will happen, I'm just saying the potential theoretically could happen, on Monday at 9:00 in the morning, you could tell, you could tell the public that you're going to have tomorrow's meeting, the regular Tuesday meeting, up in Kitsap County at 9:00, and that you'd be in compliance. That doesn't make much sense to me. My feeling is that, as a matter of courtesy, and again, to make sure that the public is invited to engage in their own local government, that a little bit more time should be issued. Why these two differences, I have no idea. I really don't know why they, why the legislature decided to just give 24 hours' notice in a regularly scheduled meeting, not a special meeting, a regularly scheduled meeting. So it seems rather odd to me, and maybe there was a misunderstanding, but these two bills passed both at the same time, and one is vastly different from the other in terms of notice to the public. So my concern remains the same, because when you do a resolution, the resolution might fit the existing Board of County Commissioners, and you might not abuse this privilege, if you will, but you won't be here forever, and other county commissioners will come in. And my fear is that somewhere down the line, when we have these hot-button issues that pertain and involve two counties, they will simply move that regularly scheduled meeting in a 24-hour notice with an action item on the agenda that pertains and involves and concerns the citizens of this county, and move it to another county. Now, that's not to say, it's just, it doesn't pertain just to an adjacent county, which is probably what it would pertain to if you had some commonality of an issue between, let's say, Thurston County, or Grays Harbor, or Jefferson County, or Kitsap County, but it's any county, and it's two or more legislative bodies. So theoretically, again, you could travel almost anywhere in the state. All I'm asking is appropriate notice to the public. If you have to give 30 days' notice to the public to move business out of the county seat and stay within the county, then you should get 30 days' notice to the public to have, to move the business outside the county. Seems reasonable to me. If you're not in agreement with 30 days, then have some specified period of time, something that's reasonable so people can alter their schedule, so they can at least make arrangements to get off from work. 24 hours' notice to go to another county to attend a meeting that has an agenda item of concern to you, I think is just inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would like to testify on the item before us? Item 8.1. I mean, I will close, I'm testing portion, I don't want commiseration deliberations.
Well, Tom, this is Sergeant Sheldon, excuse me, Commissioner Sheldon, listening to the spark box here on the Senate floor, too. Kelly is our subdivisions of the state. So, and this bill passed unanimously. I think the resolution to your issue is to elect good Commissioners, Commissioners that use the Open Public Meetings Act, that do adequate notification. I always wonder, you know, about a bill that needs to pass here in Olympia that tries to maybe fix something that's already happening. I can remember several meetings, and there's one scheduled in Thurston County, I think this week, with the Commissioners, the Tacoma County Council and the Thurston County Council to pick a replacement for an individual that resigned from the legislature about 10 days ago. So, I think there's, the process is out there, people know about these meetings, they're very rarely held. I know that we've had boards of health that we've met with Thurston County, for example. I think it's, you just got to elect the Commissioners and go through the process and do a good job of notifying people. I think that's, I appreciate your concern, but I'm not overly worried that this would be a use. Because why would you take an issue that was just, maybe, I don't know, it's a little hard to explain, but I just don't think that this is something that the legislature overly pressed.
Thank you.
Tom, you know, of all things, I can understand where you're coming from, and I've thought about it, and thought about it more and more, but the more I looked into it on this one, quite often, the more I look into it, we end up agreeing closer to this one. I think it is stronger than you're portraying, and I'll explain how I see it. You know, in all laws, there's going to be loopholes. We do our best not to have certain loopholes, and there's certain dangers out there, but in all laws, there seems to be something. So our job is to make it as tight as possible, but as you hear, there are times that come up where a decision is needed between two counties. Commissioner Sheldon gave a good example, but I want to read the actual, what it says to you. This only applies to joint meetings, number one. So we can't take our business outside of the county unless it's a joint meeting, and the other commission decides that they want to join in on us. The chances there of it being an underhanded thing already became next to nothing, because you've got to get a whole nother commission on board with having it, and you have to have it on their agenda. That's the thing, because for them, it could be a regular meeting, but for us, it must be a special meeting and done special. So that means that we set up an agenda, and it cannot be veered from. That's the difference. So whatever it says on our agenda, that's what it has to do. And it has to meet certain requirements. They may hold such a joint meeting if the meeting agenda includes an item or items that relate to actions or considerations of mutual interest or concern to the participating legislative authorities. So again, what that means is only if they have a joint action or involvement in this, not just that we want to move it or skirt it out of town. So, it's a lot stricter, a lot closer than you might think. Again, you have to get a real buy-in from another county to even try to do something, and even then, I'm not sure you'd get away with it. So I'm just pointing out that it is not as loose as what we're thinking. It's a lot tighter than that. It must be a joint meeting, it must be a consideration of actions of mutual interest and concern with the legislative bodies, and if it's done in another county, we have to sit by the, by the special meeting notice and agenda to where we can't veer from it or have other discussions outside of the agenda. So I think it's a lot tougher and a lot stricter, and you didn't need to have the ability to talk if some kind of emergency or something happens. It's already occurring. One of the things that that half came about is because, what was it, one of the counties, two of the counties down south were already meeting, and in order to keep them legal, they just created the law. I found out a little bit more when I was down there looking into it since we talked. It's already occurring. This just makes it so they're not in violation. And I know that it'd be nice, we would like to meet with Thurston County on some of the issues when it comes to the things that Commissioner Jeffrey's working on. I would like to meet with them and see what they're saying, and not be in violation. And to wait 30 days just seems way excessive when we have to stick to the agenda.
We disagree on some of the language, but what's the downside for giving 72 hours' notice to the public? In a non-emergency situation?
Yeah. I don't see one.
That's all I'm asking, is for some language in there.
Okay, so we did have discussion about this at our briefing, and came basically to conclusion that they needed that kind of flexibility. The opportunity or the need to meet with another legislative authority would basically be on a, if they needed 24-hour notice only, it could be basically because there was an emergency. So we would also have an emergency clause. I think it's pretty telling to me that the Independent Newspaper Association has supported this, and that is a watchdog, which allows citizen notice and whatnot, and so, whatever the reasons were at the legislative level for, say, a 24-hour notice is adequate. They had their discussion, it came out at this end with support of Independent Newspaper Association. I personally just feel like we need that flexibility, especially because of the narrowness of what the agenda can be. And I can't even think of all the reasons, but I know that there'll be a point in time, potentially, where we, especially given trying to get the schedules of two different commissions coordinated, that it'll have to be inside a 30-day period, and I don't want to put an arbitrary term on it, or term period on it. So I'm in favor of this.
Madam Chair, what about the idea of putting language, not a whole, but to make it our best practice, though, to put out our special agenda, you know, 72 hours earlier?
best practice, though, to put out our special agenda, you know, 72 hours earlier? Not that it has to, that it's held by law, but that it become our general policy that we try to at least do that.
Well, we do not, unfortunately, in our briefing, unless I'm missing it, have the redline divisions to the, I mean, to the code, so I'm not comfortable saying that and then making it happen later. I'd rather do start in, strike out, so that would be just a tape continuing this one more time. Commissioner Sheldon, do you have any comment?
No, I feel well informed on this, and I'm able to vote on it.
No, I'm in respect to Commissioner Sheldon's suggestion.
For additional time, I think that's kind of a balance suspenders approach, but if we write that into our code to give additional time, I, you know, I think that's okay, but I don't want to conclude a future commission, or our commission, from meeting for a, something that is very important and is time-sensitive.
So is there a motion on item 8.1?
I'd make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners approve item 8.1 as written.
I'll take it.
The move is second to approve item 8.1, which is continued from February 2, 2016, regular commission meeting. An approval to adopt an ordinance to amend County Code Chapter 2.88 to allow alternate location for regular permission meetings, and allow joint meetings between county legislative authorities. Any further discussion? Bring now the call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carried, thank you. Item 8.3, approval of the resolution amending the Veterans Advisory Board operating policy as recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board. The amendments include minor changes to the operating policy, adding two members from the disabled American veterans to the VAB, total of 10 members, and raising the annual limit from $800 to $1,000 per qualified candidate or veteran. Jeff Thompson, would you please just present this item and the rationale behind it for the public's information?
One minute after.
Jeff Thompson is the chair of our Veterans Advisory Board. Thank you very much for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have no candy for you.
Isn't it?
Yeah, it's Tuesday, not Monday.
I see.
On behalf of the Veterans Advisory Board and the veterans, the rationale behind this is that in the 2016 presentation to us, was said that the 150% of the poverty rate is $1,427 a month, and that's, this is the poverty rate in Mason County. What we're asking for is to raise our limit from $800 to $1,000, and the reason to doing that is that we're finding a higher percentage of veterans are needing help. Last year, as an example, we had about half the veterans approaching us, limited out at $800, and they could have used more money, excuse me, and so that's why we're asking for the increase. And this has been, where do we get the money? There's been back and forth on the budget issues as far as the money's concerned, and we're seeing that the last several years, we've had an excess of the Veterans Advisory Fund, and with that, and the Veterans Advisory Board has looked at that, we've been taking it one step at a time, and saying we can do more for the veterans of Mason County. So we're looking at $1,000 as then being, what we look as being the ability for us to do a little bit more, but also, we're also giving an incentive to veterans, if they need to find employment or whatever, this is not enough to live on, it's enough to help them in an emergency. And that's what we're doing, is we're helping them in an emergency. So, we had asked that it do pass to 1,000, and as far as adding the two members of the DAV, the DAV is moving its chapters, there's a DAV chapter now in Belfair, and we're putting the DAV chapter in Shelton, and this gives us better representation of the veterans. The DAV is looking at as many as a couple hundred people a month are coming through as through the DAV people, and then we're also seeing a couple hundred people a month coming through to the VSOs here in Shelton. And so it gives us, the Veterans Advisory Board, a better handle on what's going on. And so it just, it just gives us a more, more look at the veteran issue as far as Mason County is concerned. Yes, go ahead.
On the Disabled American Veterans Organization?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're looking at two chapters that are active in Mason County, is that correct?
Correct.
So do you feel a need to maybe qualify, or at least identify the chapters, or is the intention that you pull one from each chapter?
Yes.
I feel like, without some sort of further explanation, it could get crazy.
Right, no, we're pulling one from.
You're VABs.
Yeah, well, no, we're pulling one from each chapter, and that's the.
And you don't see a need to have that explicitly stated?
No, I think that they're allowed to by policy to be a member of the board, just because they are a veterans organization in Mason County. And we could add that if you would like to add it, and saying that one from each chapter, that would be no problem whatsoever. And so, as we do with the American Legion and the VFW, and we're looking at the same type.
So there are two chapters in each of those?
No, there's only one chapter of the VFW, two chapters of the American Legion.
Okay, so it seems you've been working without identifying that.
Correct.
That you have one from each.
Right, correct.
Okay, that's working.
Right, and then we have the two out-larges, which have given us an excellent representation because we added April to the board. And so now we have the women's issue, which are extremely important to us because of the women, the women veterans that are coming through. And we're also seeing an influx of widows, and that's been a huge issue for us, and that's actually one of the things that drove us to be able to put, to ask for the extra $200 because of widows, some of them are being left without benefits, and then the benefits are taking as much as a year to get them in place for them. And so once they get their benefits, of course, then they don't need our help anymore, but we're seeing a huge problem right now. As you know, the VA is, as in, as responsive as we'd like, but I do compliment our VSOs here and our DAV officers, that they've been able to really short-circuit some of this and get to the VA really fast, and we're seeing a really nice situation where, instead of waiting 18 months to two years, that we're seeing that some of these problems are being solved in six months, which really, and so that puts our place as being an assistance fund, as being, it works. So we're pushing.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Thompson?
No, you actually handled mine. That's what I was gonna ask, so I'm good with that.
Yes.
Commissioner Sheldon, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you very much, President.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tom, are you?
Would anyone like to testify on this issue?
Here's Tom. Brady, we need the drum roll again.
Thank you. It's important, I think it's important for the public to know, because we stand here now, as we get our legs under us as the VAB, as an active board. And that's, that's a little bit different than it was in the past, and like anything else, when you become active, you know, you wind up in the public eye a little bit more than you were, and this, I'm always a little concerned about a little backlash to that. So it's important, I think, for the public to know that the monies that are being distributed to the needy veterans are not coming out of the current expense fund, it's not coming out of the county budget in any shape, manner, or form. It's a particular levy that's designated for just this purpose, and it's a very, very small levy of 1.08 cents per $1,000 of property value. And every county in the state, by statute, has to have this fund. Ours is, ours is small, but at this time, it serves, it serves our purposes. We have been prudent in the way, where we appropriate these funds, but at the same time, we're looking down the road at other ways of providing the scope of services. In Kitsap County, they have a $900 a year assistance for an eligible veteran, plus a $1,100 per year move-in cost benefit for people who they provide housing to, or they have housing available to them, they give them another $1,100 to move in, because most of the people in this situation who are collecting monies from an assistance fund don't have the move-in cost, and they recognize that, and much to their credit, so they created that fund. We are actually having that discussion at this, at this time, it's been introduced. So we move slowly, we move prudently. I don't, I don't think anybody can accuse us of being rash or irresponsible. I think, I think that as we grow, that you will see the benefit of that in the county in terms of the indigent population. So I'd just like to say one more thing. When this came up, to go from 800, to go from 600, just about six months ago or so, or a year ago, from 600 to 800, I said, my opinion was, no, don't do that, because it's, you just can't keep coming in here asking for incremental increases when you know already that there's a, there's a need for $1,000. So our job is to take the resources which we have and tie them to the need which the county has. So my position was ask for the full $1,000, actually, I said 1,200, because I thought that that was, that was more appropriate to meet those needs. But because we are a prudent organization, that didn't go over too well, so we decided that we would do it incrementally. So it's not like we're coming here with a hat in our hand in any sense at all. We simply did this process incrementally to meet the need, to make it a little bit more palatable for everyone. And sometimes, sometimes that has unintended consequences. So that's why I'm standing here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to testify on this matter? Hearing one on the close, but Mr. deliberations?
Madam Chair, I'll just go ahead and make the motion first, and I'll have our deliberations afterwards. Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the resolution amending the Veterans Advisory Board operating policy as recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board, VAB. The amendments include minor changes to the operating policy, including two members from the disabled American veterans to the VAB, total of 10 members, and raising the annual limit from 800 to 1,000 per qualified veteran.
Madam Chair, I'll stake the motion, approve that item.
The move is second to amend the Veterans Advisory Board operating policy as recommended by the Veterans Advisory Board, VAB. The amendment includes minor changes to the operating policy, adding two members from the disabled American veterans to the VAB, total of 10 members, raising the annual limit from $800 to $1,000 per qualified veteran. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll be voting in favor of it for several reasons. Number one, I love the idea that we're including those new members, I think that's wonderful. Again, I had some of the same concerns you had had about having it specified, but I don't think it has to be, if they've already been working with that well. I want to point out that they've been extremely good stewards of the money, prudent is the word that is being used when it comes to it. They've been routinely turning back a third, and not utilizing a third of the money that is in there for these specific purposes. So with that being said, and the idea that costs keep going up, and that we need to be able to help them, and how good of stewards they have been, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Commissioner Sheldon, do you have any discussion?
I just thank you, I guess, to all everyone in the room there today. I'm sorry I'm not with you physically, but I really appreciate all the efforts that have gone into this over the years, and my, now, my 12 years as a county commissioner, I can see some great improvements that have been made by the, by our organizations and the services that they provide. While the need has gone up tremendously as well, but I think we're starting to respond to that need in a much more effective manner. So thank you to all who's there today.
Thank you. I just wanted to share my differences in our numbers that Mr. Thompson had presented. I looked at three years' worth of data of how many veterans had been served by this fund, and how many had hit their limit, and I used, at the time, I used the number of 750 to 800. If they hit 750, then I counted them as having hit their limit, and apparently, Mr. Thompson's used 700. But I just wanted to share that in the first three years, the three years prior to our change last year, 50% of the veterans accessing the funds had hit their limit. Last year was the first year of having the limit increased to 800, and only a third of them had. And so this, this urgency that it's needed, and more people are hitting their limit, hasn't been realized, at least in the first year of the first increase, and that's why I had concerns when this first came to us about raising it. Didn't see that it was urgent and at need, and we had an option, and I had asked that the Veterans Advisory Board consider an option of, if giving a special option to the Veterans Services Office to go up to the $1,000 if they saw that need there. The other commissioners didn't agree with me that we should go that route, I still think that's a better way to do it. I support the veterans, I support this fund, and if anybody knows what I've been doing over the last couple of years, we're trying to get this Veterans Advisory Board more active, and having more of a voice in how the Veterans Services are providing in the community. I hope you understand that I've done all that in support of this fund and everything that's been happening. But I don't think that this is a good policy, just because of what I had requested was that we need to look at it in more of a case-by-case basis by going after this first year. And so I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, we're in the middle of having one, and I will be opposing this, but it's not because I don't support the intention behind it. I just think this is a better process than it happened.
Madam Chair, one of the vouchers, you have worked very hard for veterans, and I will take it that it's just a difference of opinion on this, and not a hate against veterans at all, and I hope that the rest of the community sees the same.
I might point out that, I think with this increase, this is discretionary, the members of the Veterans Board will make the decision, but I think it gives them more discretion and to fit the work with the individuality they have out there, and the whole diverse population of veterans they're serving, so I do support this.
So I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes, I vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. That case is now item 8.8, approved to sign the letter of support for the Sweet Water Creek Water Wheel Park project as requested by the Hood Canals Enhancement Group. Mandy, thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Uh, Commissioner?
Yes.
If you wait about 30 seconds while I go out and vote, and I'll be back to listen to this. It wasn't mine.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walker, Commissioner, so we have recessed for 30 seconds? Mandy, thank you for your patience.
Get the way to get it.
No problem. Thank you. Gentlemen, carry on.
I appreciate the League of Women of Voters being here again. I do, you know, I'm a member, but I've had an opportunity to go there quite often. Those of you that do attend, I honestly, honestly believe that your attendance helps, not that we would do anything wrong, but it helps keep us honest and straight, and it helps keep all elected boards honest and straight. You can imagine, when everybody's doing well, then nobody cares anymore, and they stop coming, that eventually.
Thank you for waiting.
Different conversations happen, and different things happen, and they change, because the only thing they have to answer to is each other. So being here in front of us reminds us that we get to answer to you, so I appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Okay, we are back in session, and we are having item 8.8 on our action agenda presented to us by the Requestor, Mandy Harlow, who is president, chair, director?
Executive Director.
Executive Director of the Hood Canals Enhancement Group. Mandy?
Thank you. So to answer Commissioner Sheldon's questions about the budget, the zoning of the parcel, and ingress egress, so to start with, I'll address the budget question. This project has had a lot of community support, and we have estimated currently that the total project cost for the restoration and park development is about $820,000, 300 of which we've had sponsors or in-kind donations from the community, from the North Mason community, to come up with, you know, 520 that will be grant sourced. So the purpose of the request of this letter of support is to make it easier to seek grant funding. When you have letters of support, when you apply for grants, you often are viewed in a different light than you would be if you did not have letters of support, especially from the county. So, so again, it's received a lot of. So, again, it's received a lot of community support. So, service clubs are, you know, putting in $15,000 for a bridge, or, you know, banks are putting in another $15,000 for water wheel restoration. So, it's, there's definitely a lot of community support behind the project. So now, as far as the zoning goes, the parcel is zoned corridor mixed use. So, a park would be okay in that zoning. So, I don't know of any other restrictions that would prevent a park from being developed in that parcel. Also, the parcel was purchased by the North Mason School District back in 1997 with the intent of turning it into a park. So, it's, this isn't a new idea that has just been realized. It's something that's been kind of in the works for about 15 years now. And then, as far as the access from the highway into the parcel and out of the parcel, so we're not creating a new ingress or egress, there's actually existing ingress and egress from the state highway onto the parcel. It's about 120 foot long now, that ingress and egress, and we're actually going to be reducing that so that there is one access point in and out of the parcel. So, it might actually make it better for access onto Highway 3 or off of Highway 3 onto the parcel. So, did I answer all of your questions, Commissioner Sheldon?
Commissioner, any more questions, or did-
Well, I just wanted to thank you, Mandy, for bringing those things up. There was nothing in our packet that I could read about them, but I don't believe that parks are allowed to use in a mixed zone use.
I have, and this is, I'm going to speak to that, if that's okay. I had asked, we had asked, we had asked as a commission to have our administrative manager draft a letter to the Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding their property across the highway that they acquired that used to be the Thai Restaurant.
Okay.
What are your intentions? What are your plans? What are you doing? And in her due diligence in forming that letter, she had found that parks is not a permitted use in our mixed-use zones, which is absolutely a mistake. And I don't think anyone intended to keep them out. So, I think Commissioner Sheldon is right, and that was verified by our building director or DCD director. So, that's a mistake. We can definitely fix that in a very short time. In my opinion, it's a mistake. I can't imagine a reason for not having it.
I believe William Hunter Park is mixed use, that whole region there.
Right.
That across the street from it is Festival Retail.
Okay.
So, I-
And, you know, and I think, because as we've spoken about many, many times, we have a very different way of how we do permitted uses in our zones. Usually, you say what is not permitted, and then anything else is permitted, and we do it the other way around. And so, we can't get the whole laundry list of potential possible uses in, on that list. And that's something I really hope that we will change this year. That's probably for me. Then you miss out on things you don't even think about, like parks. I think that that is the intention.
I'm trying to remember. I'm pretty sure Feller is also mixed use.
Yeah.
So, but the zoning was put over the top of the parks, I think.
Right.
Well, Madam Chair, I'd just like to raise this, I'm glad that we're raising this issue because I think there's a lot of things that are not in the letter or haven't been explored yet. I don't want to disappoint people. If we were to look at changing the zoning, it would be difficult if we wrote a letter approving or supporting a park there and then went to a zoning hearing and made that change. Because we would be stating that we were in favor of it before we heard any testimony or anything. So, that disturbs me just a little bit. If you excuse me, I'm going to rephrase that one more time.
So, I don't know that we would be changing the zoning as much as we'd be changing the code, and that's, those are two distinct things and very separate. Making a decision on zoning, Commissioner, is a quasi-judicial action. And I agree that we do have some need to separate ourselves from the issue as much as possible to be fair and unbiased. But a code change is not a quasi-judicial action, I don't think, by law.
I think in the past, they've told us it is not. But on top of that, when it comes to the testimony, you know, I have a specific friend who I love dearly that I know is not in favor of this, but for the most part, a park being next to a school and across the street from a park will probably not be a big downer for the community. I have a hard time seeing them be upset over such a thing, especially when it's a water wheel, and that park has been discussed over and over for at least 10 years. That specific park.
Well, I'm sorry, I had to step off for a second there again to go, but the fact that the zoning would have to be changed, if we were to, I'm trying to articulate this better, if we were to approve a letter of support, wouldn't we be saying we are also supporting a zoning change?
Commissioner, I wanted to-
And that bothers me because a process for a zoning change assumes that you have a violation before you, you hear both sides. If there are another side, I don't know what it would be, but if you have both sides of this, that people, neighbors are all notified in that process. So, I'm a little reluctant to sign a letter that might put me in a position that was not objective for a potential zoning hearing.
Commissioner, maybe you were out of the room and I didn't know that at the time when I said it, but I don't believe that this is a zoning change issue. It would be a code change, development code change, allowing this use, not changing the zoning. And so, I think that to put a bunch of emphasis on the fact that we would potentially be looking at zoning changes probably kind of leading us down an incorrect path.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. What, for a code change, what does that take, Madam Chair? Is that an administrative change?
Yeah, no, that would be a hearing, but it's not a land use change. It's, I think, we move from a quasi-judicial decision in a zoning change as opposed to a legislated one in a code change. So, it's the difference between those two things.
We just did one recently, Commissioner, with originally motorsports.
Yeah, I would still take a public hearing and public comment, but it's not a quasi-judicial decision like land use.
Yes, I understand that, but still, I think I would, it's unusual to do it that way, I think. And, so, I just wanted more information. You know, I just think that we need to know the price tag. Mandy, thank you for your, for your help there in saying $120,000. We have a Parks and Trails Advisory Committee. I don't know how they would think, what they would think about this. We have a Belfair Subarea Committee that's working on a plan. I don't think that they weighed in on it either. So, I'm not trying to throw a wet blanket on it. I'm just trying to think of things that maybe we would not think about with just a short, three paragraph letter.
I had a question. So, thank you. And from what I understand, that the intention was, is potentially having the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife make an application to the Recreation and Conservation Office. In which of the categories?
So, local parks, or that we also have the option for a recreation category.
Okay. And so, as the applicant, then they would be responsible for coming up with the match money, is that correct?
Yes, but the Hood Canals Enhancement Group is taking on that for the Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife.
But legally, they are responsible for the match money.
Yes.
And of the 520, $300,000 pledged in kind, is the intention that that would go towards the match?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Maybe for Mandy. Mandy, is this a competitive grant?
Yes, it is.
And what, who decides on the applications and which ones are funded?
Right, so, after our application is turned in, it is reviewed by an advisory group at the Recreation and Conservation Office. And then, the projects are ranked, and then they are actually sent to the legislature for funding after next year's capital budget approval.
Okay, so the RCO makes a suggestion or to the legislature, and the legislature makes the selection?
Correct.
Okay.
Is there any more questions for Mandy? I have not a question, but a comment I want to make and a suggestion. And I did speak to Mandy prior to this. It's my understanding that the North Mason School Board of Directors has not been presented with this proposal and this concept, and they will be doing that on February 18th. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the autonomy of different local governments and special purpose districts and school boards especially. I would like to, and speaking to Mandy, this application is due on the 4th of March, and so we have a little bit of a window, we have a window of time still, unfortunately. Usually, these things are rush, rush. I would suggest that we table this discussion for one week, or this vote for one week pending the presentation and any action that may come from the North Mason School District Board of Directors.
Madam Chair, I move for the table and until our next regular meeting of this issue.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Mandy for coming and providing us with the information.
What is the date of that?
It's February 23rd.
And that would be our night meeting?
Yes, it would, sir.
All right.
Okay. Okay, now, I should give an opportunity to anybody in the public also wanting to answer since we did pull it out for public testimony. Thank you. So, it's been moved and seconded to table item 8.8 until February 23rd meeting, pending any discussion and presentation to the North Mason Board of Directors, this whole Board of Directors. All, any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. This is for the last action item, item 8.12, approval for the Board to authorize Public Works to solicit requests for qualification, RQ, to obtain a consultant to evaluate and provide an estimated cost to bring the current solid waste systems up to compliance and select and enter into an agreement. Mr. Matthews, could you please present this item?
Mr. Matthews. Brian Matthews, Mason County Public Works. Essentially, what we're being asked to do is, or we're asking authorization to have professionals who work in solid waste field routinely to evaluate our system for several reasons. One, we need to look at what needs to be brought up to date in the short term to make it compliant with LNI regulations. Secondly, for midterm, for efficiencies. And third term, for long-term decision-making regarding the privatization of the operation of the facilities, solid waste operation facilities. So, this scope of work that we presented to the Board during briefing was developed with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee's input, industry experts, and has the support of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. If nothing else, it will provide, like I said, long-term guidance for part of the comprehensive plan that we're working on to revise for the Board to review, consider. And so, that's why we're asking for expertise outside of our range to evaluate our system.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions here, Brian? Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner, Mr. Sheldon here. Sorry, I'm going to grab this just a second. I'm looking up from the item, and back in my briefing book, all I had was just a one-page. So, I'm getting what the public has here. And if you had additional information, perhaps it would have explained it better to me. As I read item 8.12, I'm like, sure, if the Public Works Department is going to select the consultant and enter into the agreement, I don't think that would be appropriate. I think we, the commission, have to enter into the agreement. And also, it talks about bringing the solid waste systems up to compliance. So, that, I think, raises the question in my mind, and perhaps others, where are we out of compliance? Is it, are there safety issues? What is the compliance standard that we're trying to reach that perhaps we don't, we're not reaching now?
Can you hear me, Commissioner?
Yes.
So, Brian Matthews again. So, there is some issues that have to do with our hazardous waste. Last year, we asked, requested an audit by Labor and Industries to come out and review our facilities. We made several changes, updated our plans. We are, we meet the minimum standards. We've had a number of worker injuries regarding falls, trips, that kind of thing. So, we're looking at, a comprehensive look at the system to make sure that it is compliant with safety issues. So, are we out of compliance? No, as far as meeting the basic standards. However, is there a way to make it more safe for our workers? More than likely. And then, long-term facilities is, we have facilities that haven't had much work put into them over 20-plus years. And so, the life, I guess, lifespan of those systems would be looked at also, and then just our efficiencies on how we run our facilities. So-
Okay, so, you're in touch with our risk management people, Don Twitty and others?
Yes, sir, I am. And incorrect, you know, asked regarding, the Board would authorize the contract. That's our standard operating procedure. We would request a qualification, do the evaluations, and make a recommendation to the Board, so-
Okay, but we meet all the minimum standards, and we're not out of compliance, but within state or local regulation?
As of last year, that's correct.
Okay, as of last year, as of the end of-
Right. And so-
End of 2015.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions for Brian Matthews?
I just have a comment.
Actually, let's wait till we open the public testimony then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that leads us to the public testimony. Let me comment, please.
Conley Watson, 140 East Fox Lane, and I happen to be on Solid Waste Committee and working with Brian, and yes, we work very, very hard. This lady will tell you that we honor him and respect him, and I thank him immensely.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheldon, just to let you know that when this item was briefed, we had, the room was filled with the Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else like to testify on this issue? Here we go, we'll close the testimony, and I'm going to adjourn the motion.
Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the Board to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications, to obtain a consultant to evaluate and provide an estimated cost to bring the current solid waste system up to compliance and select and enter into an agreement.
And I'll second the vote, Madam Chair.
The move is seconded to authorize Public Works to solicit a request for qualifications, RQ, to obtain a consultant to evaluate and provide an estimated cost to bring the current solid waste systems up to compliance and select and enter into an agreement. Any more discussion? Let me also preface this, or just say that one of the, another reason, well, I guess it's faded out here, but it's more completely, there is maybe an opportunity to look at, should our solid waste collection, our solid waste acceptance transfer stations be privatized? And so, this would give us an idea about whether or not that is even feasible. So, any more discussion?
Just to add quickly about privatization, I think there's different models in different other counties now, and that I'm sure you're looking at, so it doesn't mean a full, sometimes not a full privatization, sometimes it is, but there's lots of room in between, but the committee is looking at it.
I appreciate that clarification. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay, that does take us to our public hearing. We have a public hearing to consider speed limit change on Belfair Tohuia Road, changing the speed limit to 35 miles per hour in both directions between milepost 0 to milepost 0.133. That's not very far. And execute the updated speed limit ordinance for Belfair Tohuia Road. There are spots.
Madam Chair, I apologize for that, to go out on the floor, and I appreciate you very much being on the phone, and hopefully this is the last call meeting we'll have to do.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
And we still have a quorum. Let the record show that Commissioner Sheldon left the meeting. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Loretta Swanson, Mason County Public Works. And I will keep this short and sweet since we're burning time this morning. This is a request to change a portion of the Belfair Tohuia Road speed limit. And basically, as you're leaving North Shore Road and heading up the hill on Belfair Tohuia, well, I'll start heading down the hill towards North Shore. It's posted 35 miles an hour. There is a very short section of road that if you're heading up the hill, it's posted 45. So, you've got this weird little zone where you have two different speed limits in the same zone. We were out taking a look at some other- We were out taking a look at some other traffic information in the area at the request of assistance and that came to our attention and it's a simple matter of cleaning that up, so we have the same speed limit and the same stretch of road. So we're requesting that the board approve a speed limit change of 35 miles per hour for the milepost 0 to 0.133 on the Belfair Tohuia Road.
Madam Chair, do you have an exact area that you can give me a visual of where that goes up to?
Oh, Commissioner, I should have anticipated that.
Is it up to the driveway of that housing development or has it passed it?
No, we're not up to the housing development. So as we're climbing up Belfair Tohuia, we pass View Court and we're coming around the curve.
Up here is where it's raised up.
Yeah, no, it's not all, it's not that far.
The reason why, I keep thinking of, remember Bob Harris and going up the hill and getting a ticket?
Yes.
Because you have to get up to speed to make it up the top of the hill.
Yes.
So if we're not up to the top of the hill, we can't have a speed trap there, so...
Yeah, no. And actually, I think, Commissioner, that may have been the reason for the split speed limit.
Yeah.
For a portion of the time, but it is not our intent to trap truck drivers rolling up the hill.
Any other questions for Loretta? Any questions for the audience? Thank you, Loretta. We open the floor for a public testimony. If you'd like to testify, please raise your hand. Right now, we'll close it. Congratulations. Commissioner, do you have any questions concerned, any concerns or anything, sure?
Well, the only concern I have is I don't wanna, because Bob Harris actually lives on the top of that hill. The same guy that got the ticket, he's, he's a pokey driver, told us at a public meeting he's only had a ticket twice in his life, both times was going up Sand Hill Road because you have to get to a, a speed to be able to make the hill, which actually makes sense. And the same guy lives on the top of this hill right here that we're talking about, but as long as you have an opportunity to get up to speed, the location is talked about, I think you'll be fine. You're still only gonna be going 35 getting up to that and then you can speed up backwards, there won't be a speed trap. They do use the other one, but they, there was even comment that it is used specifically for that, so they can control some crime and stuff like that, so in a sense, it was a speed trap, the other one, so...
I see. So this actually takes care of that. Okay, I don't have any discussion and I'm favorable this.
And Madam Chair, I move for the approval of the speed limit change on the Belfair Tohuia Road, changing the speed limit to 35 miles per hour in both directions between milepost 0.002, 0.133 and execute the updated speed limit ordinance for Belfair Tohuia Road.
All second. We move and second to approve the speed limit change, changing the speed limit to 35 miles per hour in both directions between milepost 000 to 0.133 and execute updated speed limit ordinance for Belfair Tohuia Road. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you. That takes us to item number 10, Department Heads and Elected Officials. We have one department head. Is that a short line? No. Okay, so that would take us on then to board reports and calendars.
Okay, had the inspection of the Veterans Housing. I attended a Housing Coalition Meeting, a regular EDC meeting, we had an MTA special meeting, went to the Democrat meeting, we had our Pickering, we had our, our Community Town Hall on the speed limit changes at Pickering Road, met with an investment company this morning in regards to potential huge developments up in the North Mason region, Legislative Steering Committee Conference Call this last week. We have our elected officials and directors meeting. Do we have an MTA meeting?
Yes.
Okay, for somebody who's not on my calendar, I knew we did. So MTA, then we have, I have a business retention and recruitment meeting with EDC, North Mason Chamber of Commerce, we're having a, a meeting on strategy, Legislative Reception, the LFC Day where I'll be, spend the day in Olympia, canvassing board, EDC luncheon and then backdoor briefings.
Okay, so you'll be doing canvassing board what day? The 18th?
The day that you were supposed to, I'm doing yours.
Okay.
So if you have it in your phone, it's the same day.
Okay.
Because you had...
Well, there's two big canvassing board meetings, one where you actually review and the other one where you certify, so I want to make sure that you attended the 18th.
I will double check and I'll tell you right now. Yes, 18th at 2:00.
Thank you. So following last week's meeting, I did attend the graduate, first graduation of a individual in our probation department for district court for the moral recognition training. Told that group of kids, I says, they're very, very young, the group of kids taking the, our MRT training, which is kind of a 12-step program around learning moral responsibilities and the responsibility to the community and goal setting. And I told that group, I says, your community needs you and I should do your goal settings and they have to do some help community service, you know. They think long and hard about what your role is in helping the community. Had a MaceCom meeting, let's see, or, we had a local region Clean Air Authority meeting, we had a meeting of Swanson, Oaks, Green Diamond, Simpson, County and City regarding the Simpson Rail Line going through town and then all the way through to the old Mill 5 and what's potentially, that could be in the future. We had a meeting with the VAB Director or Chair and then attended the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance and then the Speed Limit Town Hall meeting at Pickering Road. 58 people in attendance there. I love that kind of attendance by the public on these types of issues. Really helps us a lot. Interviewed candidates for executive director position for Mason Matters. Then we will have the elected officials directors meeting this afternoon at 11:30, Mason Transit Authority Board meeting, more Mason Matters. Interviews, we have a chapter, the Mandy Board, the Action Council and then the Life Service Steering, WASCs receptions, I'm not sure which of those three I'll be able to attend that night. Logic Tax Advisory Committee meeting and then the going away party for Brian Matthews. I think both of us will be there at the same time. A canvassing board meeting, a state organ meeting for the mental health court. And then that brings us back to Monday for briefings at 9:00. Anything else to go before this board?
Madam Chair, I move we adjourn.
We adjourn, thank you.